I call the work session to order of the October 24th, 2024. Meeting, I will entertain a motion concerning the agendas.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I move to approve the work session and regular meeting agendas as presented.
Motion is on the floor. Is there a second?
A second?
Very good. Mr. Gessker.
Mr. Campbell.
Aye.
Ms. Woods.
Aye.
Ms. Edwards.
Aye.
Mr. Arrowood.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Darby.
Aye.
Mayor Claffey.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. And the first item of business is a presentation of the opioid abatement efforts, Community Needs Assessment Knowledge Advisory Group and Carter Foundation. Ms. Bogart.
I'll turn this over to Ms. Kaufman to introduce this item this evening.
Sure. So Stanton has been collaborating with Waynesboro and Augusta County on a regional approach to allocating opioid settlement funds. So we have worked with the Knowledge Advisory Group and the Carter Foundation to develop a regional needs assessment. You should have had, you should have a copy of the executive summary both in front of you and in the published agenda packet. Um, so I'd like to introduce presenters, Trina Willard and Sandra Wright, uh, from, uh, Knowledge Advisory Group.
Welcome.
Evening.
Nice to have you all here tonight.
Thank you. It's nice to be here. I always love coming to Stanton. Thank you to city council and the Stanton City government officials for inviting us to be here today. Um, as Ms. Kaufman mentioned, my name is Trina Willard and I'm the owner of a company called Knowledge Advisory Group that's located in the Richmond area. And I'm here, uh, today with my colleague Sandra Wright. Um, we also worked on this project with our partners from the Carter Foundation, which is also located in Richmond. So I'd like to begin by sharing a brief overview of the project that we've been working on. So the city of Stanton, Augusta County, and the city of Waynesboro have conducted this needs assessment as a part of their planning for the use of funds from the National Opioid Settlement. These funds may be used for programs designed to treat, prevent, and reduce opioid use disorder or the misuse of opioids. So describe that a little bit more. Opioid misuse can include taking more than the prescribed dose or taking it more often, using opioids to get high, or taking someone else's opioids. The risk of opioid use disorder, which is sometimes referred to as opioid dependence or addiction, is higher when opioids are misused. And common prescription opioids include Oxycontin, Percocet, morphine, methadone, codeine, and fentanyl. Now, in December 2023, the city of Waynesboro contracted with Knowledge Advisory Group and the Carter Foundation to conduct a needs assessment to plan for opioid abatement efforts in Stanton City, Augusta County, and Waynesboro City. Needs assessments are typically the first step when government entities or other institutions must make decisions about how to use funding or provide services in their communities. I'll tell you a little bit more about that in just a minute. So this project has been guided by an advisory committee with one local government representative from each of the localities that comprise the Saul region. And this assessment was funded by a planning grant from the Opioid Abatement Authority. And you'll hear me refer to that as the OAA. So the OAA was established by the Virginia General Assembly in 2021 to abate and remediate the opioid epidemic in the Commonwealth through financial support from the Opioid Abatement Fund. The fund supports efforts to treat, prevent, and reduce opioid use disorder and the misuse of opioids in the Commonwealth. The financial assets in the fund result from settlements and other court orders relating to legal cases regarding the manufacturing, marketing, distribution, and sale of opioids, as well as other sources such as gifts and donations. Needs assessments include gathering information across a variety of sources to understand the conditions in a community. In that regard, we've taken a number of steps to collect insights. The consulting team initiated this project by conducting background research on evidence-based strategies to address opioid misuse and interviewing subject matter experts from 10 organizations in the region to determine the needs and resources available to individuals who misuse opioids. And those included the Community Services Board, the Regional Jail, Augusta Health, the Office on Youth, Blue Ridge Court Services, as well as other organizations. This information was used to identify critical issues to explore further on a survey distributed to a broader group of community stakeholders. And our assessment also includes a review of published community health data and opioid abatement resources for the Saul localities. We then shared our preliminary findings and recommendations in two town hall meetings with residents in the region, one of which was in this room, and one town hall meeting with community health professionals and other relevant stakeholders to collect additional feedback before finalizing our needs assessment report. Today, I'm sharing some of the information we've gathered with you, including thoughts, opinions, and experiences from professionals and community residents. Our goal was to better understand how opioid use has impacted residents in the area, the resources that currently exist to address opioid use, and gaps in services to address opioid use. So let's begin with our findings. First, in reviewing data that was available from the Virginia Department of Health, we found that two of the localities within the Saul region, Stanton and Waynesboro, are classified by the Virginia Department of Health as high need for targeted drug prevention and treatment support compared to other localities across the state. You can see that on this slide here. While this scoring method is not specific to opioids, there's other evidence to suggest that opioids are one of the drugs misused by residents in the region. For example, Augusta and Waynesboro residents had a higher rate of women giving birth with opioid disorders and higher rates of emergency responses to opioid-related events compared to Virginia overall. In addition, Waynesboro had a higher opioid death rate compared to the statewide rate. In addition, some representatives we interviewed also mentioned that methamphetamines was the most significant drug-related issue in the region, but opioid misuse, particularly involving fentanyl, is also rising. And among those who responded to our survey, 65% described opioid misuse as a significant problem in the region, and 93% indicated that they had known someone who struggles with opioid misuse in the region. In addition, relatively poor economic conditions in the Saul region may contribute to opioid misuse among residents. Research suggests that poverty increases addiction risk factors, such as stress, feelings of hopelessness, low self-esteem, decreased social support, and decreased access to affordable healthcare. A review of published data suggests that residents in the Saul region may be particularly vulnerable to addiction due to economic conditions. For example, as you can see on this slide, the median household income in Augusta County, the city of Stanton, and the city of Waynesboro are lower than the median income for Virginia overall. Poverty rates in the city of Stanton and Waynesboro are both higher than the statewide rate, although the poverty rate is slightly lower in Augusta County. The percentage of households in which housing costs are more than 30% of total household income is also higher in the cities of Stanton and Waynesboro as compared to Virginia overall. We also found that residents of the Saul region have access to fewer mental health and primary care providers compared to Virginia overall, which likely makes it more difficult for those with substance abuse disorders, including opioid misuse, to obtain help from trained professionals. To share a little bit of information about this, the mental health provider rate, which includes psychiatrists, psychologists, licensed clinical social workers, counselors, et cetera, was substantially lower in Waynesboro and Augusta compared to the statewide rate. In addition, the primary care physician rate was lower in Augusta and Stanton compared to the statewide rate. Individuals we interviewed also mentioned there are too few providers in the region, and the lack of providers affects timeliness of treatment. When asked to identify the types of programs needed to address opioid misuse in the region from a list of evidence-based strategies, community stakeholders selected recovery support services more often than any other option. Recovery supports are non-clinical services, meaning that they're not usually provided by a medical professional, that assist families and individuals to recover and stabilize from alcohol and drug problems. And those can include things like drug-free housing, self-help and mutual support groups, childcare, case management, employment counseling and support, and peer support and peer providers. And other common responses to this question included programs for children whose parents misuse opioids, behavioral therapies, and harm reduction strategies. Additionally, this slide shows the most common barriers to obtaining services for opioid misuse. These responses came from the stakeholder survey, and you can see the barriers noted most often were lack of awareness about services and treatment programs, transportation, and lack of available services or treatment programs. And a few other barriers were noted as well, including cost, the stigma of substance use problems, lack of internet access for telehealth options, and language barriers. Now, I also wanted to mention one additional topic that came up frequently, and that's the topic of prevention programs, specifically with regards to opioid misuse. According to community stakeholders, opioid misuse prevention programs are somewhat available in the region, but they only mention specifically a few very light-touch programs available through the Office on Youth and Valley CSB when we're, when we ask them to identify those programs. So as an example, a light-touch program could be something like a presentation on substance use issues once a year that's provided in the schools. So those slides provide both statistics and feedback regarding the prevalence and risk in the region. At this point, I'd like to share our recommendations for funding priorities to address opioid misuse, which are grounded in our findings. And you see the recommendations here. They're under this, this umbrella category of expanding the number of substance use disorder providers and the array of evidence-based programs and services to address opioid misuse. I'll discuss each of these primary recommendations today. Please note that there are additional recommendations in our final report that may be considered that we won't detail today due to time. However, we believe that these five recommendations are appropriate priorities for pursuing OAA funding and are in alignment with OAA funding. So the first recommendation is expand the number of substance use disorder providers. So this speaks directly to the infrastructure of providers in the region. As I noted earlier, there's a lack of mental health care providers according to published data and to stakeholders. The lower rates of mental health providers and primary care physicians among residents in, of the Saul region is a factor that can make it difficult for those who are misusing opioids to access the professional help that they need. And although this problem is not unique to the Saul region, stakeholders did indicate that the primary barrier to recruitment of providers in the region is low pay and low Medicaid reimbursement rates. To address this barrier, it may be helpful to identify incentives for providers to practice in the area or pursue grant opportunities that focus on shortages of behavioral health professionals in rural communities, such as a recent request for proposals that was issued by the Foundation for Opioid Response Efforts in summer of this year. With that, let's talk about the service gap that came up, came up most frequently, which was recovery support services. So our second recommendation is to expand recovery support services for opioid misuse. Community stakeholders selected recovery support services more often than any other option from a list of evidence-based services that are eligible under OAA funding. As a reminder, these supports are non-clinical services, meaning they're not usually provided by a medical professional, and they assist families and individuals to recover and stabilize from alcohol and drug problems. And I gave a few examples of those earlier, but things like drug-free housing, childcare, case management, and peer support. Now, although the community resource inventory, which is included in the report, indicates several of these types of programs exist, it's unclear how many of them have the capacity to serve the residents that need them. With that, let's turn to the second most recommended service. About 69% of community stakeholders identified programs for children whose parents misuse opioids as a priority for implementation or expansion in the Saul region. In fact, no one we spoke to was able to identify any family intervention services specifically for opioid misuse. So another recommendation is to expand programs for children whose parents misuse opioids. Specific programs that would fill this gap while satisfying conditions for funding from the OAA include those that address the needs of pregnant or parenting women with opioid use disorder, and any co-occurring substance use disorder or mental health condition and the needs of their families, including infants with neonatal abstinence syndrome through evidence-based or evidence-informed methods, programs, or strategies. Um, we also spoke with the OAA about our findings in the report, and they also indicated that kinship navigation services to support family members who step in to care for children whose parents are undergoing substance use disorder treatment would also be an allowable use of the funding. Now, because prevention programs for youth appear to be very limited in the Saul region, we also have a recommendation to expand opioid misuse prevention and education efforts. According to community stakeholders, opioid misuse prevention programs are not readily available. Um, we also heard a very compelling story in one of the town halls from a community resident whose son passed away after using fentanyl. Her family had never heard of the drug when this happened. Evidence-based interventions that could be considered are available from initiatives such as the Blueprints for Healthy Youth Development, which is a project within the Institute of Behavioral Science at the University of Colorado Boulder. One example of an intervention identified by this organization as a model program is the Project Towards No Drug Abuse, which is a high school classroom-based drug prevention program that aims to prevent teen drinking, smoking, marijuana, and other hard drug use. Other model programs to consider may be identified through the offices of the surgeon general. And although not identified as priorities on the community stakeholder survey, harm reduction programs, detoxification and crisis center services, and inpatient treatment were identified as priorities by town hall meeting participants. Some harm reduction programs do exist in the region, including Narcan or Naloxone and Narcan trainings, which are available through the Valley CSB and the Central Shenandoah Health District, although more of these programs may be needed to meet the demand. In addition, efforts are currently underway to build a detoxification and crisis center in the region, but additional funding would be needed to expand upon or complete that project. While the lack of inpatient treatment in the region was mentioned as a priority by town hall participants, the total cost to build and sustain this type of project is likely beyond the scope of OAA funding available to the localities in the region and would require additional investments by local government that may not be available. So those are our primary recommendations from this needs assessment report, and I greatly appreciate your time this, this afternoon to share that with you, and I'm happy to, um, address any questions.
Questions from council?
Where? And you maybe not can answer this. I'm just curious. Has the council, where I've seen, um, any effect from, I mean, nationally, we're hearing about fentanyl and some other illicit drugs coming across the border. Are we seeing it in our community?
Are we, are you seeing an increase in fentanyl in this community?
Yep.
Um, we certainly heard from stakeholders that they are seeing that in the community. We don't see, uh, I don't think we have any data specifically to that at this point, any public data. Um, but we certainly were hearing reports from individuals in this community that while methamphetamine has been the most prevalent drug abuse, that they are seeing replacements for that, and fentanyl is becoming, having a higher profile in this community.
Having said that, have you seen, and get ready, guys in the back, have you seen an increase of, let's say, the federal government, the state government, our local sheriff, police? Have, are we seeing, you know, increases and maybe trying to track some of this stuff now? I'm just, I'm just asking. I don't know.
Yeah. I, I think there's definitely been significant efforts at all levels of government, um, across many localities to try to get a handle on these issues. And these types of substances, opioids, are definitely more prevalent, um, in recent years related to the increases in the development and distribution and the use of those drugs, um, through prescription means, and then that is expanding to non-legal uses.
I'm curious. Do y'all, have y'all seen an increase on the street?
Okay. You come up to the podium, please. I'm sorry.
Sorry, I wasn't prepared to speak on this.
I know.
Don't have any hard data for you, but yes, there is fentanyl in the community, uh, mostly in the form of pressed pills that are meant to look like Vicodin or Percocet. Um, so we are seeing some of that, but methamphetamine is still probably the top concern from a drug enforcement.
Have we had any deaths of our young people from some of this incoming fentanyl? Made to look like pills, whatever?
Yes.
Yes. Thank you, Chad.
One more thing I'll mention about that is that, um, one of the, the very high risk related to fentanyl specifically is that it can only take one dose to, um, cause a death. So that's one of the reasons that the increase in the prevalence of that drug is so dangerous and, and concerning across the country, really.
Let me ask you a question about the scope of the OAA funding. You said that, you know, some of these programs would likely be on, be beyond the scope of our OAA funding. Give us a ballpark figure of what our OAA funding is currently, and what do you foresee coming next year? I mean, how long are we going to be getting these settlements from? Well, I saw Walmart settled one this past week. So is, has it peaked as far as the firms settling with?
Yeah, I don't, I don't think it's, yeah, I don't think it's peaked yet. I'll actually, uh, look to Ms. Kaufman to see if she has any additional information about the specific numbers that you're looking for that have been awarded to, to Stanton. Um, but there are still many cases that are undetermined at this point that could lead to additional funding. Um, so it's, it's not, it's not all settled at this point, is what I would say.
Do you foresee this program to be ongoing in 10 years?
I, uh, hmm. I don't know. Sandra, do we know the answer to that question? Is that something we can get back to?
I don't. I think it is, and I think, but I'm not sure.
Yeah, I think it, it, it's going to depend. Um, it's certainly in the code. It's in statute at this point, the OAA in Virginia. So to the extent that the funding continues to become available through legal action, it will continue. I don't think we have a solid idea at this juncture as to how long that might last or continue. I mean, wouldn't, oh, sorry, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, wouldn't the goal, however, be to have, have the basis for the infrastructure that would hopefully continue or to just shore up the, the services that are currently here? Right. So that providing. Hopefully, yeah. Sorry. Oh, no, go ahead. But it sounds like other funding would have to come available as well to, to maintain that. Yeah, I think it's an opportunity, the funding provides, provides an opportunity to expand upon and build that infrastructure and put services in place that can continue to address this issue as it's on the rise.
We're not looking at building permanent facilities, are we, with this money?
No. I think that's one of the things that we do know at this point is that the scope and expanse of the funding would probably not be extensive enough for those types of cap, capital projects.
I'm horrified by this, um, statistic in number three where it says 69% of the community stakeholders identified programs for children whose parents misuse opioids as a priority. That, that's, that's a big number. So what is the current program that, if we were to find some of these 69% whose parents are misusing the opioid, do we separate the child from its family? I mean, do we go to community protective services? What, what are our options?
I think we'd want to research what sort of evidence-based strategies are, have, have been deemed identifiable on that front. Um, one of the ideas from this research is that there be a process to identify providers who can, who can provide evidence-based strategies that would be applicable under the, the opioid funding, and that there may be providers here who are equipped and have those sorts of programs already in their toolkit. So that's one of the ideas there.
In finding three on there for healthcare providers on that.
Yes.
Stanton's was definitely skewed by the Western State there. Now, we don't. Now, we don't, is there any way to know outside of that? Because I think to get access to those, you'd have to check in.
To parse that out?
Yeah, I mean, I'd just be interested to know how we are in there as far as private providers.
Yeah, we made an attempt to look into that. We did not have success parsing that apart at this point because the way that those data are gathered and compiled, it's, it's not discernible. But that is, I think you're absolutely on target, that that's definitely skewed by Western State, which of course is available to folks outside this region as well, so.
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor, looking forward, do you see solutions, regional, regional solutions or Stanton-specific or both, supporting things? Could we do, could we have more of an impact working together as a small region? Or can?
Yeah, I'll, I'll, I'll give you a couple of reflections on that. One is that just based on our work on the project, obviously, this region has a very strong history of working well together, and these three localities worked with us on this project in a very collaborative fashion. It seems as if there is a successful history of collaboration here in that way. That's not to say, and certainly wouldn't be our place to say, whether Stanton might want to embark upon some initiatives on its own. I think both are certainly possibilities. What I will say is that there are collaborative grant opportunities for localities through this funding stream, and I think that is something that the OAA is giving some preference to. And that is, would be a strong consideration we would mention for the localities to consider together.
Thank you.
And the consideration of the recommendations, just with the discussion of the scope of this funding not being to the level to talk about covering the complete costs of some of these primary recommendations, was there any consideration of bumping six and seven, the common barriers to the top? Because improving awareness and improving transportation are much lower costs and might have a greater short-term immediate impact if there's already a plan in place for when this funding becomes available to put things in motion immediately? I'm just wondering if that was considered?
Yeah, I think that's certainly worth consideration. When we prioritize these, I think the general theme is that any progress on any of these recommendations would be positive for the communities. So if due to a myriad of factors, funding that's available, initiatives that are already in place in the community, collaborative opportunities and so forth, if you, if you all made decisions to reprioritize those, this is just kind of our first pass based on the needs assessment information that was gathered. So there's certainly a lot of other factors as to how you might address this moving forward.
Further questions? Well, thank you for your presentation. We hope you come back and update us with better, better numbers telling us that things are getting better.
That's what we look for is progress.
Absolutely, so, well, thank you very much for coming tonight.
Could we ask what like the next step is, like?
That'd be excellent, yeah.
Yeah, what is the next step? It's Kaufman or?
Yeah, so the next step, once we complete these presentations to each of the three governing bodies, is to work together, the three localities, to develop an application process so that we can begin, you know, soliciting proposals from the community for addressing some of these needs that have been identified through the community needs assessment. While we all will receive direct settlement funds for each community over the next 12 to 15 years, it's a bit of a moving target, depending on which settlements and the timing of the settlements and the payment, and the timing of the payments. There is a significant amount of settlement funds that Virginia has held back and is awarding through a competitive grant process by region. And so in discussions throughout this process, it is our intent to also pursue those funds to supplement local funds.
Thank you again, ladies.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Lord, Ms. Wright, please come back and update us. All right, next item on our agenda is a Stanton Public Library annual report.
I'm pleased to introduce Sarah Skrivas, our Director of Library Services here in Stanton, who's going to give her annual report.
Welcome back, it's good to see you.
Thank you, good evening.
Evening.
I'm here tonight to present an update on the activities of the Stanton Public Library, primarily focused on the last full fiscal year, fiscal year 2024. I want to start off by noting that this year marks 150 years of library services for the city of Stanton.
Help stand.
The library.
Happy birthday.
We look pretty good for our age, I think. The first library was hosted by the YMCA and has grown through the years, relocating to where we are currently, back in the mid 90s. And I'm excited to demonstrate how far we've come from that initial founding. When people think of the library, they think of checkouts, items, you know, loaning books, loaning DVDs, so I'm starting here. We had another great year of high use with over 275,000 items checked out. This includes physical checkouts of books, movies, cultural passes, and the digital items from our online collections. That's a 9% increase over last year. I've mentioned before in the past that we cannot submit our automated renewals to the state report, and the automated renewal is when our library system automatically extends the loan periods when no one else has placed a hold on the item. If we do factor in those renewals as another use of each item, our circulation clocks in at over 434,000 items. People are still very curious about the effect of eBooks and digital media on library activity. As you're probably aware, we have simply incorporated those items into our collections and have for over a decade. The bulk of our collection funding comes from state aid to public libraries, which has reached almost 100% funding for the first time in over two decades. So we're pleased to have great support building our collections in both formats. Digital circulation makes up 22% of our annual circulation now, up from roughly an 18% share last year. But physical collections are still holding strong. I've heard from some people that they're afraid we're going to be replacing our physical collections with all digital, but that is not our intent at all. We added almost 11,000 new physical items to the library last year, which was a slight increase over fiscal year 23. I'm going to touch on both the physical and the digital circulation separately over the next couple of slides. So first, looking at our physical circulation in comparison to our neighboring systems. And I really want to stress that public libraries are not in competition with each other.
But.
And. And this is not a full picture of what each of our libraries does. This is just, you come to the desk with a book and a DVD, and that counts as two items checked out, it's just those original checkouts. No in-house, no renewals, no digital. It doesn't include visitors, programming, and the impact that has. But as you can see, our one-location library is the busiest in this sense. I see that as a testament to this community's enthusiasm for leisure reading and lifelong learning, and also our staff's responsiveness to the needs of our patrons. I'm not shy about saying we have an incredibly dedicated and passionate bunch of overachievers at the library. We are also the only local library who resumed our pre-COVID schedule, and we're the only one in the immediate area that is open seven days a week. Back to touch on digital circulation briefly again. As background, we offer two separate digital lending platforms, Libby and Hoopla. They offer different publishers, different titles, but a range of items, eBooks, audiobooks, magazines, movies, and more. At the beginning of the pandemic, we saw a big bump in the digital use, and then it plateaued for a little bit, and I thought that trend would last for quite a while, kind of settling in at that new level. But we saw a large increase in fiscal year 23 and over 34% increase this fiscal year. In those six years, our digital circulation is up 134%, which I think is just a phenomenal number. I think this is a result of not just the pandemic at first, but the more extensive adoption of mobile devices, the rise in popularity of downloadable media such as podcasts, and the overall convenience of being able to check these items out anytime, anywhere, as long as you have a library card, you're not limited to our building's hours. I'd like to turn our attention to the people who created all this activity. Last year, we had over 150,000 people visit the library. That's over six visits for every person in Stanton. And it feels like every day we're welcoming new residents and signing up people for cards. So last year, we registered almost 2,200 new accounts, and at the end of the fiscal year, we were just above 18,000 registered cardholders. As you can see from the pie chart, a full 50% of our users are age, are under age 40. This is in part due to our annual outreach initiatives, I think, where we try to sign up local students at various grade levels, including kindergarten, middle, and high school.
And Mary Baldwin.
Yes, we did that this year, we had a wonderful outreach in September. I'd like to look at the big picture, just so you can see the general trends of our activity. We're definitely on the upswing. I'm not sure when it will plateau, I'm sure it will at one point, but our staff are always working to build excitement and engagement for what the library offers, and we hope this upward swing trends higher for quite a while. Technology is another large component of what we focus on. Digital literacy and access to technology is his core service initiative. We had over 8,200 people use our public computers last year. That does not include Wi-Fi usage. And we hosted 54 book a librarian sessions. These are one-on-one appointments that are primarily tech-focused on a skill or software or program of the person's choice. And one of a definite highlight of last year was our technology services librarian, Carrie Whitlock, applying for a grant from the Public Library Association, being selected as a grant recipient and implementing a whole digital learn program for seniors. She did this by presenting small classes at the library and partnering with V-Pass at their senior cafes. 34 people participated and 20 completed the requirements to receive a Chromebook of their own so that they could continue to practice and utilize the skills that they had learned through the class instead of immediately losing those skills, forgetting what they had learned, or having to rely on transportation to the public library to keep developing them. And you can see one of our very excited recipients in the little video. So including these tech classes, we hosted over 700 events last year, which averages more than 58 a month. So if we look tired, that's probably why. Over 30,000 people attended our events, which was a 17% increase over fiscal year 23. And what kind of programs do we offer? Pretty much something for everybody. We have your, what you think of when you think of the library, the early literacy storytimes, book clubs. But we also have senior-focused programs like low-intensity fitness classes, memory cafes for those experiencing dementia. We have enjoyed focusing on citizen science with partnerships with the Valley Stargazers and the Augusta Bird Club. And we're also proud to continue our partnership with the Virginia Festival of the Book, bringing the excitement of that big literary celebration over the mountain from Charlottesville. We're also grateful for their friends as they continue to provide the community with volunteer-led concert events at Little Lunch Music every month. In terms of other successful initiatives, we achieve visitable certification, which means that all of our staff completed training to promote an accessible and welcoming experience for visitors with disabilities. A partnership with the Neighbor Bridge resulted in a little free food pantry installed at the southeast end of the library. It's open 24/7 to address immediate food insecurity needs. I'm sorry to say it's used a lot, but I'm grateful it's there for the people that need it. We're also so lucky to have organizations like the American Shakespeare Center and Woodrow Wilson Presidential Library and Museum partner with us to take down financial barriers to our local cultural institutions. With your library card, you can get free admission to the Presidential Museum and two free tickets anywhere in the house to selected shows at Blackfriars. We have these gems in our backyard that we promote nationwide, and now our residents have more opportunities to engage with these cultural icons, free if they have a library card. We continue to distribute free COVID tests to the community on behalf of the Virginia Department of Health. Last year, we gave out 2,200. These test kits are free for us to request from VDH and free to anyone who comes to the library to request them for themselves. Thanks to a grant from the Community Foundation of the Central Blue Ridge, and additional support from the Friends of the Library and the Parks and Rec Department, a Story Walk was installed at Montgomery Hall Park. And a Story Walk is, you can find them nationwide. There are a series of kiosks that hold pages of a picture book so that families can be outside together, engaging in both physical activity and literacy activities together. We, one thing that we have really taken the lead on is data management for our library consortium with our partners in Augusta and Waynesboro. It's a very unglamorous task, it's pretty much invisible to everybody but us. And that's the idea, is that we are trying to make sure that our data is accurate and streamlined so that when you go to search the catalog, things are findable. You're not finding junk, you're finding exactly what you're looking for faster. In terms of our beautiful old building, we were thrilled to have some improvements over the past year. The big one being the roof, you may recall that we had serious moisture issues in the building. And thankfully, since that new roof was installed last fall, and we've had regular inspection and clearing of our storm drains, we have not experienced that again. We have also had the front railing replaced because it was starting to crumble, it was becoming a safety risk, and two major security projects included updating security cameras and starting the installation of badge access, controlled access doors, both to foster a secure environment for both staff and visitors alike. We are also trying to update furniture to replace our inflexible outdated pieces like large wooden tables from the 1970s. We're trying to implement more cafe-style flexible seating that we can rearrange easily to give visitors more options. And that's important because it's one of the things we can do with the building right now. It was renovated in the mid 90s, and it doesn't provide a lot of flexible space for 2024. What we're really seeing the need for is more study spaces. We'd love to be able to offer individual or small group rooms, but we don't have the layout, the outlets, the electrical, the network drops in a way that accommodates this now. There's general wear and tear on the building after being in there for three decades. And there's some lighting that is inadequate for the needs of the collections, particularly down in our ground floor. There's a very dark corner, ironically, it houses the sci-fi fantasy. So it's kind of like atmospheric, but maybe not the best for browsing and finding what you're looking for. That area also houses large print, which is, you know, for people who have vision issues and could probably use better lighting. The city is very lucky to have an active and engaged Friends of the Library group. Our friends, as you are aware, are great supporters of the public library, supplementing funds for programs, staff training, collections, and other needs. So far this year, they've contributed over $60,000 towards library services, including their big terrace renovation project of our backyard, which you can see on the bottom there. The project is currently in design finalization. They've had to have engineers work out all the specs for the unique footings and poles that are going to be installed for the shade sail so that we can have a comfortable space. The trees came down in late summer, so you can see it all cleared out on that photo on the right. And we hope to have a bigger progress update soon. I think we're really close to beginning work. And as always, I have to mention our sister organization, the Talking Book Center. It's located on our second floor, providing accessible public library services to our blind, low-vision, and print-disabled neighbors in a four-county area. This past year, they sent out over 15,000 audiobooks to their roughly 300 patrons. And this service can't necessarily be summed up easily in numbers. As you can see from the quotes included, I'm not going to read those outright, but it's a quality of life service that is a frequent lifeline for people. And in a world where we hear about loneliness epidemics, 70% of patron respondents to the annual survey said that the Talking Book Center helps them feel less. helps them feel less isolated. So if you know anyone who is struggling with standard print materials, please send them our way so we can connect them with free library services through the mail. Around the country, around the country, many public libraries have struggled. I'm sure you've seen the issues surrounding censorship, around funding. And I hate that I even have to say this, but even bomb threats at public libraries. I am so happy to report that we have been insulated from all of this and we are lucky to enjoy great support and respect from this community. I'm incredibly proud of our team at the library and I'm so thankful to be serving the people of Stanton. And thank you to both city administration and U Council for extending trust and enthusiasm for what our team does. At this time, I'm happy to answer any questions you may have about our activity this year.
Questions from council.
Do one question. Now, when I get on valleylibraries.org and request something and what I want comes out of Waynesboro, but I pick up in Stanton.
It's our stat.
Okay.
But if it's our item that goes to Waynesboro, it's their stat. It's wherever it's physically.
Wherever it's physically checked out. Okay. And what is book a librarian?
Book a librarian is up to thirty minutes of one-on-one time with one of our librarians. As I said, it's primarily requested as tech help.
Research a subject or tech help or something. Okay.
Yep. We always have a reference librarian on duty, but of course, when we're on the desk, we're trying to help everyone that comes to us for assistance. But if you place a request for a book a librarian appointment, you get an insured up to thirty minutes one-on-one help without interruptions.
Like do your term paper?
Do what? We have some reference guidelines that limits what we're able to do. No medical or legal advice, no editing, proofreading. But we will definitely help teach you technology, help you navigate a new device, things like that.
Cool.
Help them to teach the AI to do your term.
Let me ask you a question, Sarah. You said you got eleven thousand new additional physical pieces.
Yeah.
That's a phenomenal number.
Yeah.
When we think of a library, you know, I'm old school. I think of a book.
Yeah.
How many of them are books and how many of them, you know, are?
Oh, I don't have that number with me. I'm so sorry. I don't even.
Majority of them books?
It's it's books, DVDs, books on CD. So I really just don't know off the top of my head. I'd have to run a report for that.
That's a phenomenal number to acquire in one year. That's all. That's a lot of physical.
And all of those have to get processed. They get catalogued, they get processed before they can even get to you, the reader too. So it's a lot of staff effort.
Fascinating. Well, you know, as as always, you were amazed at what your library accomplishes.
Wouldn't be possible without the support of the city. So thank you.
I haven't seen the story walk yet at MHP. Is it is it near the traditional playground or the natural playground?
It's at the Natural Ridge Playground. And we plan on changing out the book, I think on a quarterly basis. Yeah.
Any other questions from council?
I think so.
Well, once again, thank you, Sarah.
Thank you all. Thank you, Sarah.
Our next item on the agenda is the introduction and discussion of commercial property assessed clean energy financing program. Ms. Borger.
Mr. Mayo, Economic Development Director is going to introduce this item and our guest presenter this evening, who's on Zoom.
Yes. Oh, good evening.
Welcome.
So yes, CPACE is a special loan program for commercial property owners to make energy saving improvements to their buildings. CPACE is operating in sixteen other jurisdictions in the state. Virginia Energy chose the Virginia Pace Authority as the administrator for the statewide CPACE program in twenty twenty-two. Joining us is Holly Ettinger from the Virginia Pace Authority. And she's going to give you an overview of CPACE and how it can help our commercial building owners. Holly?
Hi, thank you. I am just gonna launch this. And hope you can see it fine. I'm sorry I can't be there in person. After those two great presentations, I wish I were there so I could meet those people who do wonderful work for your community. CPACE is a loan program specifically for commercial properties. And it is to help commercial property owners finance things that save that building energy or water or make it more resilient to storms. And these things can be added to an existing building. It can be a renovation or a retrofit. They can also be a new construction building, but it has to be commercial. It really, the loans seek to be cost neutral. So essentially, the improvements to the building save the property owner so much money that it offsets the payment on the CPACE loan. That's kind of the ideal situation. Of course, how you operate your building kind of determines that. However, that's kind of the the goal of a CPACE loan. One of the ways it accomplishes that is because the term is very long on a CPACE loan. It's it can be up to the useful life of the equipment. So if you were putting in solar panels, maybe you would have a twenty-five year useful life on those. So you could have a loan that stretches out for twenty-five years, which would mean your annual payment would be low and the savings would maybe offset the cost of those panels annually. Projects could include solar panels, like I just mentioned, but mostly what we see in CPACE is upgrades to heating and cooling equipment that is like more efficient HVAC systems as well as good ratings on windows, LED lighting, automated building control systems, which are becoming very common and do a great job at saving energy for property owners. So this is a program where the local government has to adopt the program, but it is kind of a statewide sponsored thing. And a local business maybe would install an HVAC system and then see those benefits of savings. The Department of Energy has been supportive of the CPACE program nationally for many years. And we see CPACE active in thirty-six states. And actually, I think that's thirty-seven now. New Mexico just joined the ranks last month. And in Virginia, we have state legislation and the Virginia Pace Authority, who I work for, is kind of working jurisdiction to jurisdiction to ramp up the adoption. For a lot of property owners making these big investments into their building, a new HVAC system, a new hot water system, a new boiler perhaps, those things are a lot of upfront capital. And they also kind of have a lot of soft costs perhaps. And so CPACE is really good at helping close that gap and helping overcome those barriers for those property owners to be able to do it. Essentially, if you were to own a commercial property and need to put a half a million dollar HVAC system in and you would go to your bank, they may give you a seven-year loan or a ten-year loan if you're lucky. It's very hard to pay off that half a million dollars in that short amount of time. Many property owners put those improvements off and kind of run on old systems, which are not as energy efficient, and also then have increased maintenance costs because now they're running some old equipment. So this program really tries to help property owners by getting a good tool to finance these big improvements. And one of the key things is also that payback period. So you can kind of, you don't have to out front all that money right away. You can finance it over the life of the equipment. It is just for commercial properties. So we're talking about office buildings. We're talking about hotels, hospitality. We're talking about industrial. And for industrial borrowers, the the improvements could be something, you know, a little less conventional. Maybe it's not an HVAC. Maybe it's not a heating cooling system. Maybe it's a piece of equipment in that manufacturing process. So and then it's also for apartments, buildings. And we see some senior housing projects. Actually, we had one close earlier this year. And for apartment buildings, it must be five units or larger. So it's really just for those bigger multifamily projects. It is not for residential. Residential PC exist in three states, but not in Virginia. So it's definitely not for single family homes. It was enabled in two thousand and nine in Virginia, but it has taken some time to ramp up. There were several localities that had kind of their own programs, such as Arlington and Alexandria. But then in twenty twenty-two, the state realized that, you know, the best thing is to have a program that anybody can use and the rules are the same from jurisdiction to jurisdiction. And so the state did a competitive bidding process and the Virginia Pace Authority was selected to kind of build this statewide system. And actually, just last week, Alexandria joined the statewide program, which is great because what we see is commercial property owners kind of tend to have property in different places. Once they have investments, those investments can be in different jurisdictions. So by having the same rules in, you know, across the state, we're going to see the program get used more and hopefully drive more energy savings. I mentioned that we are the administrator. And in that role, what we really try to do is make it kind of like CPACE in a box, I'll say, for the jurisdictions. So we have vetted legal documents and program guidelines and even a sample ordinance, which is going to, you know, probably be reviewed by you soon. So that, you know, it's an easier ramp up for localities and we can kind of facilitate the process. When a loan closes though, all three parties are involved. The borrower, AKA the property owner, the lender, which is a financial institution. These aren't, these aren't government loans. These are private dollars being invested into private property. So you have the borrower, the lender, and then the program administrator. And we're working on your behalf. And then the locality is part of the final approval. And because the reason these loans can have such a long term is because they're tied to the property tax ID number. And by being tied to that property tax ID number, they not only have that security, but they also follow the property. Which again, if you're a commercial property owner, you're thinking about investing a half million dollars into your building, but maybe you want to sell that building in five years. So you're not sure you want to make that investment. The CPACE loan stays with the building, so with the HVAC system. So, you know, it kind of gives a way for the property owner to pay for the equipment as they're using it. And if they sell the building, the next property owner takes on that the loan. So we would work with Stanton on the promotion and kind of standing up the program. And then on your behalf, like we are with the other jurisdictions, we're going to vet every project that comes through to make sure is showing energy savings. We take a look at the appraisal. We evaluate these projects to make sure they meet the statewide guideline. Once they do, then we would bring it back to your staff for approval and execute the final agreement. The collection on the loan is done by the lender. And if the property would go delinquent, that responsibility of collection could also get delegated to the lender. I'm, am I going really fast? So I mentioned, you know, we kind of have the the set of documents for for your review, for your solicitor's review. And there's kind of, you know, three key things that we would like to have reviewed and, you know, make sure you're you're all okay with before it would move forward. But the first one being the ordinance. So I'm glad to answer any questions. I did cover that very fast.
Ma'am, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, go ahead.
Yes, thank you very much for this presentation. It's interesting. I'm just trying to understand all the details. And could you just slowly go over one more time what you meant by the reason the locality is involved is that the CPACE loan and equipment are attached to the property number?
Yes.
And that the the loan, or rather, the property and equipment would transfer together?
Yes.
Would transfer upon sale. So could you kind of? And so why does that have to involve? I guess, why does that? Why is is that necessary? And then why does that involve the city?
So the loan, the the closing loan document is called the the program agreement for each project. We also, we record that and we also record a lien certificate so that the loan is recorded against the tax ID number. That is the mechanism that lets it transfer to the next owner if the property gets sold. So it's not tied to the the property owner's personal finances. It's tied to the real estate. So their lien gets recorded and then the loan gets passed to the neck picked up by the next property owner, the payments. We, it it's paid as a special assessment. And so it looks and acts like a tax. It is collected on the same schedule as your taxing, as your taxes. And if it goes delinquent, then it would follow the same procedures and have the same rights of priority as a tax, as a special assessment, as an assessment or as, you know, a local general assessment.
So basically, what you're saying is it's it's, so I can get a clearer understanding. It is tied to your taxes. So when you're repaying, when they're repaying back the loan, it comes out of their property tax.
It lays alongside the property tax. They're still going to pay their property tax and they're going to pay this in addition.
In addition, so it goes together.
Yeah. But see, what we found is that the treasurer, you know, the locale, the the local treasurers and county treasurers didn't want to take on the extra billing responsibility. They didn't want to have to try to put, in other states, we put the pace payment on the tax bill. But in Virginia, we didn't feel like that was going to, we felt like that was going to be too much burden on local government. And so what we do in the program agreement, the closing loan document, is we assign that annual billing to the lender. So they're taking responsibility for the annual billing, but technically it is a special assessment that's recorded as a lien.
What if the, in this, the building or whatever, the business goes bankrupt? What happens then? Does that, does the state take over or the city take over the property? Or what happens there?
Yeah, just like if a, if a, if a business were to go bankrupt and that property owner stopped paying their taxes, those taxes would sit unpaid until there was a foreclosure on the mortgage or until you started a tax collection process. So the the this CPACE payment is the same way. So if a property owner stop, doesn't make a payment on their their pay CPACE payment or and or they didn't make their tax payment, those amounts are going to sit and wait until the property is, you know, either repositioned by the mortgage lender or bought by someone else at a tax sale, things like that. So the CPACE loan doesn't accelerate. It it stays with the property and only the past due amount, like that one year they were late, would be due, just like the taxes, whatever is past due, just those one or two years.
You mentioned that there were sixteen other look cities, localities that are involved in this. Can you name some that are relative to Stanton, like same size kind of thing?
Yeah, sure. You know, it's easier for me to take a look at the list. So yeah, Chesapeake, Chesterfield, Harrisonburg, Henrico, Loudoun. And like I mentioned, actually, we're we're working currently with Charlottesville. They just adopted and Alexandria just adopted as well. So we're really, because this is a commercial loan program for energy efficiency, we really like to get to places where there are commercial properties. So.
Let me ask you a question about, I would say, the closest locality to us is going to be Charlottesville. What was the business in Charlottesville that was interested in this? And what does your project involve in Charlottesville? Just as an example.
Or Harrisonburg, they're in Harrisonburg too, so.
Yeah, actually, the Harrisonburg one is kind of more fresh in my mind. It's a, it's a business incubator property. It's, it's, it's a repositioning of an old industrial. And they are making improvements to it to, for, to accommodate new tenants. And many of those improvements are eligible, are energy savings and water savings, so they're eligible. Charlottesville. I'll be honest with you, it's not popping into, into my head right now what, what project that was. But one of my favorite, I know it's not very close, but in, in Richmond, no, in, where was that one? Petersburg. In Petersburg, there's a historic old hotel in downtown Petersburg. And they used CPACE to refinance, to finance the HVAC system for that hotel. So it was a historic rehab kind of right in their downtown, you know, one of those projects that helps, helps the main street look great. And they were able to use CPACE and to help with their funding.
Let me ask a question to Ms. Beauregard and Mr. Mayor. Have we had any people approach the city of Stanton saying, is such a program available? And would this, well, how would we proceed with that?
Yes, as a matter of fact, the Hillside property, the old Robert E., Hilltop, the old Robert E. Lee High School. They actually approached us about this before we had talked to the Virginia Pace Authority. They wanted to know if we were going to adopt this and that said that would help them with their development. So that's the only one I'm aware of at this time. And I believe the project she was referring to in Harrisonburg is probably the Harrisonburg Innovation Hub.
Okay, thank you.
That's good. Go ahead. Is the, the building behind the Hilltop there, like was the old school? Is it part of Hilltop or something? It is.
Yes.
Okay.
And they're talking about putting a third building in.
Correct, yes.
I do have a question. If, if a business takes advantage of this and then they sell the business, does this come across, I mean, it's, it's just a straight lien that shows up on the title for it? Or is it more convoluted?
No, it would show up on a title search.
Okay, so and it would be the, the entire balance that would show up as a lien?
Yes, and then they would get, they would also be able to see the, the financing agreement and that has the full payment schedule in it.
Okay, so you buy the business, you buy that as well? Okay.
Yeah.
Just one more question. Are there any tax benefits to businesses when they? I know when I upgraded my HVAC system several years back, I had a high efficiency HVAC. The heating, the heating, uh, yeah. Thank you, our heat bomb. Yeah, I got a, a tax break on, on my taxes. I wonder if there is such a, an incentive for businesses in this case?
Yeah, there are, there are a lot of tax credits out right now from the, from the federal government. The IRS has some, some guidelines on what type of improvements and what type of properties. But for my home too, I got the tax credit when I did my, replaced my heating system. But definitely for businesses, there's some big tax credits out there for energy efficient equipment, but also for solar. And those are bigger this year because of the, because of the greenhouse gas reduction funds. So yeah, they could use, that, you know, they could, they could reduce how much they finance by taking advantage of those tax credits. Also, you know, sometimes there's incentives from the local electric company too.
Thank you.
Anything further from counsel? Mr. Blair, do you foresee any issues if we were to proceed with this?
I, I don't. I think it is worth noting that there has to be a public hearing for this particular type of ordinance before you adopt it. So if you want to consider it, there is an opportunity for you to hear from the public before a final vote.
Thank you, yes. All right, well, this is good information on something that we've never discussed before. Very, very interesting.
Mm-hmm. Definitely.
All right.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for all your info. Anything else before we go to a closed meeting? Is that the last thing? All right, we have a, does someone have the paperwork for a closed meeting?
It's Mayor Claffey.
Woods.
I move to enter a closed meeting for discussion of the disposition of publicly held real property located in Stan crossing where a discussion in an open meeting would adversely affect the bargaining position or negotiating strategy of the public body pursuant to Virginia Code Section 2.2-3711A3 and for the performance of the city manager pursuant to Virginia Code Section 2.2-3711A1.
Thank you, that's a mouthful, huh?
Yes.
Motion has been made, is there a second?
A second?
Second by Counselor Edwards. Mr. Kessler.
Mr. Robertson.
Aye.
Ms. Edwards.
Aye.
Mr. Arrowood.
Aye.
Mr. Campbell.
Aye.
Ms. Woods.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Darby.
Aye.
Mayor Claffey.
Aye.
Motion carries.
We will now go into closed session. We will return at seven o'clock. Good evening. We have to come out of closed session before we can start tonight's regular meeting. I'll entertain a motion.
Mayor Claffey, I move that council reconvened in an open meeting to certify the best of each member's knowledge that only lawfully exempted public business matters were discussed and that only public business matters as identified in the closed meeting motion were heard discussed or considered in the meeting.
Motion has been made, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Counselor Woods. Mr. Kessler.
Mr. Arrowood.
Aye.
Ms. Woods.
Aye.
Mr. Robertson.
Aye.
Mr. Campbell.
Aye.
Ms. Edwards.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Darby.
Aye.
Mayor Claffey.
Aye.
Motion carries.
All right, thank you. And now we can call the, call the order of the regular meeting. Would everyone please join me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And tonight's invocation moment of silence will be brought to us by Counselor Edwards.
We will be in justice.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Well, we are two weeks out from a general election in which we will elect leaders at all levels of government. And so I want to take this opportunity to pray for our country and for the election. Please feel free to join me in this invocation if you desire to do so. God of shalom, God of peace, I pray for a safe and peaceful election process and for protection over poll workers and election officials, for candidates and elected officials, for government workers and for citizens as we exercise our sacred right to vote. During turbulent times, maintaining us a deep and abiding commitment to our common values of equality, freedom, and democracy. Give us open hearts, give us the open hearts we need to love our neighbors as ourselves and the humility to treat one another with dignity and respect. May peace prevail, in his name, amen.
Amen, very nice. I too was going to mention the fact that Election Day rapidly approaches. And I see outside here, we have thirty-six hundred votes have already been cast. The city total voting is between seventeen and eighteen thousand. And therefore, we can see that we have twenty percent have, have already cast their ballot, which is outstanding. And I don't think we've ever had that many this early. So I'm most impressed with the early turnout and we hope that everybody gets opportunity to vote in the next two weeks. And that's all I have for mayor's report tonight. I'm a little rushed today. I spent today in, I was at Washington DC for a, a service at Arlington. And if you ever get the opportunity to go, do so. It's very impressive, so. Who has anything for matters from council?
You know, related to the election thing, I, earlier this week, I spoke at a Cub Scouts meeting in Augusta County. And a nine-year-old asked me, what happens if there is a tie? And before I could say, well, you recount, he says, but what if you, and you count it again and it's a tie? And then you have another election and it's a tie, what happens? And I said, you know, I'm gonna find out. And it's, it's interesting. I did not know this, if there's, if there's a tie, there's no automatic recount in Virginia. There is no runoff election at, at our low local level. Here, it immediately goes to the drawing of lots.
Yes, it happened a couple of years ago.
Yeah, yeah, it was like Prince George or something like that. It would, yeah, so.
Fredericksburg, yeah.
Yeah, like names in a hat, something like that, so, yeah. So Adam, get ready.
It's gonna be close.
Who, who gets to draw from the hat?
I think it was someone from the legislature.
Yeah.
Ask a nine-year-old, he'll know.
Yeah, yeah.
All right, who else has something to share?
I have two reminders for everyone tonight. I had the privilege to help out with a great community organization, just a citizen that runs this for the past couple of years, the whimsical, whimsically witchy Halloween event on Culture Street to raise, fundraiser for Stanton City Public Schools for, to support arts and music programs. So got to help out with that last Friday. And the fundraiser goes through the end of the month. So just wanted to make everyone aware of that. And then I saw Ms. Newman here for a work session, but she left. But with the Shen, Central Shenandoah Valley for the Office on Youth, just, they are hosting a screening at the Wayne Theater next, on October twenty-ninth next week for Screenagers Under the Influence. And this is a series program, just talking about the dangers of various topics for youth. And this one is addressing vaping drugs and alcohol in a digital world. So I've heard very positive reviews from that program, so just wanted to share that with the group.
Very good.
Sure, well, the city manager, Elizabeth Beauregard, Counselor Campbell and Counselor Woods and myself and Mr. Kessler for a while, attended the Virginia Municipal League Conference in Virginia Beach. And it's a conference for local leaders, for city councils and town councils. And you get to meet folks from all over the Commonwealth, attend workshops, learn about all kinds of great things. I'm still processing all of the information that I, that I learned. It was two or two and a half days and it was really terrific. And it's also good to just be with your fellow council members, with staff to be together outside of this room. That was great. I also with Amy would like to say, because you're a, you're, you're squirrel nation. But I also was invited to attend the Central Shenandoah Planning District Commission's last meeting and it was at the, the airport in Weers Cave. And it was really interesting to hear what they're doing to expand the, the airport up there. They're increasing hangar space. And, and then, so they've already increased the hangar space. Then there's going to be another further expansion across the street. And so if you have a private jet or you have a friend with a private jet that needs hangar space, you can rent some space there. That's all I have.
All right. The one other thing I wanted to throw out there, we want to welcome Jeff Stein as the new president of Mary Boland. Several of us attended the inauguration of Jeff Stein last Friday and it was a very impressive ceremony in his last Friday.
One thing too. Just, you know, for those that are inclined, you know, I think as a healthcare practitioner, I would like to, you know, stress for those that, that do or have thought about getting their flu vaccine. That is out and about, a lot of different pharmacies. So I really recommend in getting the flu vaccine. And like I said, a lot of people think the flu is, you know, when you get the stomach, that's not the flu. The flu we're talking about is when you get it in the lungs. And if you ever get that one, you do not want that kind of flu. Also, T-DAP vaccines, tetanus, diphtheria, pertussis, the whooping cough, that is available. The pneumonia vaccine for those sixty-five and above that have, you know, that have chest issues, a COPD. Yeah, I really strongly recommend getting that vaccine. That will help protect, protect you if you have issues with that. So just, and then of course, there is the new twenty-four, twenty-five COVID vaccine. So if you're so inclined to do that, I recommend that as well. So just think about these, we want to try to protect our citizens. For those that, that have some health issues, it's best to get these. It's best to get these vaccines and, and protect yourselves and protect those around you. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Just to answer the question, I, I looked it up here. A member of the electoral board is who would draw.
Oh, thank you.
For the local kind.
Very good.
Thank you.
All right. Learn something new every day.
Every day. Every day is a school day.
All right, that brings us to our regular meeting. And we open with the consent agenda. Per council procedure memorandum, number 14 is the policy of city council, to have routine, non-controversial items placed in the consent agenda. Do any council members desire to remove any item from the consent agenda to be placed on the regular meeting agenda for separate consideration? I will entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor.
Sir.
I move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Motion has been made. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Second by Counselor Edwards. Mr. Kessinger.
Ms. Woods.
Aye.
Mr. Arrowood.
Aye.
Mr. Campbell.
Aye.
Mr. Robertson.
Aye.
Ms. Edwards.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Darby.
Aye.
Mayor Claffey.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. And the first item of regular business is updates on the economic development in Stanton Crossing. Ms. Beauregard.
Mr. Mayo is back with us to go through this item this evening.
Welcome back.
Hello.
Hello.
Let me get situated here. It's a pleasure to be back for you this evening. The first time in my new role, might I add, too.
Yes.
Oh, that's.
So, yeah. And tonight, I want to give a very brief overview of some of the initiatives that we're working on in economic development, as well as an update on Stanton Crossing. Sure. So I'll start with Stanton Crossing, because it has been the forefront of many of our presentations over the last decade, and for good reason. I'm not going to spend a lot of time recapping all the past efforts from the beginning when the city acquired this property, but I will touch on some of the more recent activity and significant grant awards that have better positioned us to win desired projects. So we'll look at Phase One. That was the first phase of Stanton Crossing, 25 acres sold to Stanton Crossing Partners. This development along the front side of Richmond Road generates an estimated 1.3 million annually in revenue for the city. And it's not fully built out yet, so keep that in mind, that we'll continue, continue to see those numbers increase, which helps that whole strategy of having the Phase One begin, the Stanton Crossing development continues to be bragged on and used as an example in the state, saying, that's the way you want to do a property like this. So you can start generating revenue to do the infrastructure and improvements, develop the rest of it, and also get that attention that you're looking for. So next, I'll look a little bit at the state funding. During most of your all's time on council, we've seen a lot of progress with the development of the park related to the Virginia Business Ready Site Grant Awards. The first award received in FY '22, you can see there was the, in the amount of $850,780. That allowed us to do the due diligence studies, engineering design work. So we were at a Tier Two, and we were able to bring it up by doing some of these due diligence. The next award we received in FY '23 in the amount of 4.5 million. That is funding the sewer utilities and installation extension. And then, most recently, we received $9 million. And let me say, that was the third largest award to any locality this last cycle. So that's something that we're proud of. And that will cover the water utility installation extension. And that includes an elevated water storage tank, which I'm going to mention again later, so hold on to that thought. But if you drive out there, you will see work already underway. They're grading the site for that water tank and getting the access road up there. And then I just talked to Lyle this morning, and so the water installation will be coming long shortly after. I believe most of you also attended the ribbon cutting for the new Crossing Way Road project funded by VDOT. That was over 10 million. Prior to that, we, we did the entrance, the first entrance. So that's why you see that number up there, the road access. First, we did the entrance for the Phase One, and then the extension. But that was VDOT funded for that. Again, you guys were at the ribbon cutting, most of you. And this road that looks beautiful now, not the road to nowhere, opens up access to the property. It also includes a shared use path along, along the length there, 100 space park and ride, the bus stop. We're not going to mention the lights right now, but these project awards emphasize the state's commitment to the site. And really, it is seen as one of the top sites in the state. Okay. You all also approved a marketing plan for Stanton Crossing. So we've been able to generate significant interest from potential businesses on the East Coast by actively engaging with site selectors and company executives to showcase the unique opportunities that Stanton offers. Our goal with this is to build awareness and interest for Stanton Crossing to a target audience of site selectors and company executives in various industries by driving traffic to our Stanton Crossing landing page. So we have that new Stanton Crossing specific website with all the info and facts there. But in addition, we want to build awareness for Stanton, Virginia, our town, right? And the incredible opportunities for businesses here, just because of the special place it is. So this slide, I know it's a little bit small, but you can see a sample of the companies who are looking at us. There's several large real estate firms listed there, some technologies, you see Google down at the bottom, pharmaceutical companies. These are all in line with what we're looking for. So this is really good, what we're seeing here. Also, the rate at which we're gaining followers and impressions continues to climb. We even outpace several of our neighboring localities, not that it's a competition, but I do check. And some of those larger localities don't have as many followers or these kind of numbers. So that's pretty impressive. With this momentum building, our next task to tackle will be the department website. So we haven't done that, I think it was 2017, when we did the Economic Development Department page. So we're getting all this attention on LinkedIn and on the Stanton Crossing site. We need to kind of get that updated to match that when people are checking out Stanton as a whole and Stanton business, that, that'll just show better for us. So we are getting proposals for that as we speak. I will say that economic development efforts have changed over the years. The model used to be, you got to get the company, and then the people will follow. That's not the case anymore. You know, the trend has sort of swung, swung the other way, where you need to attract the people so that the companies are ensured that they're going to have the workforce. So rather than just putting out materials like the old school with just the site facts and, and all that data, we also aim to include like fun facts on our LinkedIn. We have spotlights that will highlight quality of life in Stanton, outdoor amenities, recreation opportunities, even programs like Sarah was talking about with the library. That's a great thing to highlight that makes Stanton so special. So we, we share that. You can see there, just kind of a collage, we've got, last Friday was World Guitar Day. So we did a little tour with Hudson Dalton. They manufacture some fabulous guitars right here in town. We have, you know, some ribbon cuttings, we'll promote that. Our grant announcement, of course, Cadence, they recently went through a rebranding, and then they just announced more recently an expansion of their facility here in Stanton. So that's really exciting. And it's good to promote that stuff out there. Okay. And as a result of marketing and site development efforts, to have Stanton Crossing business ready, we've seen an influx of RFIs or requests for information. I cannot go into too much detail on these in open session, but I thought I'd kind of put them there in a summary on the slide, so you can see the varying types of sectors, the number we're receiving. They range anywhere from 25 to 250 jobs. The level of investment, you can see there, 55 to 750 million. So it's kind of a, a good variety of things. If you have specific questions, which I thought you might, on the process of how these inquiries compare with other localities in the region or even the state, I asked Dr. Jay Langston, Executive Director of the Shenandoah Valley Partnership, who can speak better to that, since a majority of these RFIs stem from his office. So if you have any questions for Jay.
Otherwise known as Amanda's assistant.
Oh, good.
Do you have any questions?
Now, Amanda's done a great job, first of all, about taking you through sort of the process. Y'all, I applaud the investment that you have been making in the city. Stanton Crossing is one of our top two properties that gets requested from site selectors, from the Virginia Economic Development Partnership. We are trying to put it in front of as many prospects as possible. And Amanda mentioned something that is very pertinent to us, is that site selector community? There's an entire industry of site location consultants, and it is the bulk of who we see recommending properties for the projects that we see. And the state sees, you know, 30 or, or 40%, well, for us, with a lot of leads coming from the Virginia Economic Development Partnership, then that is a higher percentage for us. It is also who we reach out to, to try to educate them about properties and opportunities within the region. And having Stanton Crossing, which is a tremendous asset for us, not that you're not competitive, but you do want to get your fair share of those business opportunities. And we go through that process, and it can answer almost everything required from the request for information that the site location consultants submit to us, because you have done that work. So that puts you a step ahead.
I do have a question. So speaking to the VEDP site selection process and the tiering system where, is with, with the waterline infrastructure coming in, the water tower, that, will that move Stanton Crossing into the upper tiers, Tier Four, Tier Five, from a VEDP standpoint?
Yes, sir.
And then with that announcement, that that's funding's there, the project's underway, have we seen an uptick yet with more interest with that announcement? Or is it really dependent on when that actually gets installed?
I will, can honestly tell you, we get probably a third of our request from BDP, where they are picking Stanton Crossing as a project, the product that they want to put in front of the consultants. And you can't ask for anything better than that. I mean, that's, that's advertising that you really just can't pay for, because they are working directly with the site location consultants, who are the influencers for those corporate decision makers. So when you do work on sites, it is noticed. And just by the fact of doing the work increases your exposure. And once you have it there, it eliminates the risk for the people that are having to make that decision. So it's a huge thing.
You said one of the top two.
The same question I asked.
It may be a locality to your north. No, it's, and it's in, in the same position. It's Innovation Village. Innovation Village, it's been in the marketplace a long time. It didn't hit its stride, though, until the last three years, much of it because of the question you just asked. Not all the due diligence was done. And so there were question marks about geotechnical and other things. Once we started the work, that made the difference in the eyes of VDP and site location consultants, because they know that that risk that's associated with purchasing land is being eliminated. So it's one less concern. And it's really all about risk mitigation.
Have you seen much interest in the rail side of it as well? Because I think that's one of the things that sets us apart.
As a matter of fact, you just got submitted for a project because of rail availability.
Great.
And, and natural gas. Those are two items that are fairly limited resources, and you have it. Very, very few sites have it. And I'll, and, and that's a good point, too. A lot of people see rail, you know, going by land, oh, that's a rail server site. That is not the case. There are a lot of factors that prevent properties even adjacent to rail from being rail-served. Yes. And so the fact that you have it, you have the ability to have a switch and a turnout with a spur in your park, really does set you apart. And it's going to be, for those kinds of projects that need rail, that's typically one of your higher value manufacturers. Big investment, typically.
And so when folks reach out and then sort of back off, do you know what they're, what's keeping them away? What are the obstacles for them? Things that we are lacking that we still need to work on?
Good question. We ask that for every project that we deal with, whether it's Stanton Crossing or one of our, our others. Oftentimes, it's, you know, it starts as a big funnel, you know? The site location consultants or the company, or both, are looking at a multi-state region sometimes, or sometimes it's just within one state. But then, if it's within one state, it's typically, you've got some competition. And again, it's that, that process of elimination. Do you have the workforce? Do you have the, the capability for the infrastructure? You know, do you have the electrical capability, the water capability? And, and it goes on down. Sometimes it's as simple as company changes their mind. Sometimes those projects evaporate because they're fighting for resources within the company themselves. It could be competition within divisions, or it could be, you know, they find two sites, they are equal in the eyes of the decision maker, and it comes down to, maybe this one is a little closer to market proximity. And sometimes it's a subjective decision, and that really pays, plays in to our decision making. After all of that objective work that is done, someone still has to make that decision. And so it can be for a number of reasons there. But the state is doing a good job of trying to capture those, because the more we know, the stronger we can be for the next time and be better positioned. Welcome.
Any other questions?
I'll finish up here. And one thing I will, to that last question, I heard recently about two sites were kind of in competition, and they ended up going, they were both very comparable, and they ended up choosing the one because the decision maker's wife went to school, college, near the one location, and that's what sold it for them. So, you know, it could be anything. Thank you, Jay.
Thank you.
Looking ahead, I'm excited to build our business retention and expansion program and improve community engagement with our local institutions. I have increased participation with partner agencies focusing on workforce development. We just received a Go Virginia grant in our region for talent pipeline initiatives, so I've been working with that. I'm following local housing strategies, looking forward to the comprehensive planning process that will begin soon here. And now that our enterprise zone renewal has been submitted, we can begin looking at incentives to revise our local program to include additional areas slated for development and increase some small business support. So the feedback so far has been positive. I'm, I'm really excited to secure a new assistant, hopefully soon. And with that, hopefully, we'll have even more improvements, because we'll have more bandwidth to, to go around and do these things. We do have a wealth of talent in this community, and I appreciate all the suggestions, feedback, collaboration from everyone. Please feel free always to reach out anytime to me if you want more information on anything, let me know. And I'm just going to close by taking an informal poll here on water tower design. What'd you guys think?
Oh, my gosh.
I've got, number one is the crown jewel for the Queen City, or we've got the logo in the middle, or the watering can.
Watering can.
So let me know. But don't tell Lyle.
Do the jewels glow?
Yeah, I was thinking about this today when I was driving. When I was driving up 81 today, I, I looked at Mount Jackson's, and they had the, the apple basket, and it's fabulous, and I was admiring it.
We need an iconic water tank. I'm good.
The one in the middle there looks like Woodstock, but.
Yes.
And I was questioning, how is our size going to be? I mean, is ours, I think that Woodstock one is much bigger than the Mount Jackson one. Do you have?
I think it's going to be, Lyle gave me that one in the center. He didn't know. He didn't know I added, I took the liberties to add those others myself. So I'm guessing it's going to be comparable to what you see in the center there. But yeah, I mean, I'm open to ideas. I'll entertain. There's a whole, there's a whole following for iconic water towers, just so you know. So, yeah.
We can't put the Stahler Brothers pictures on.
Yeah.
Woodrow Wilson.
Thank you guys very much.
Yeah, thank you for coming.
League of Nations.
Great report. Thank you very much. All right, next on the agenda is a public hearing and a consideration of a request by Patrick and Karen DeFlorio under the provisions of Stan City Code eighteen point five, five point zero six, zero dash three for a special use permit at twelve nineteen Stoneburner Street to create two residential units on the ground floor of the building. Ms. Beauregard.
Tim Heartless will handle the side of it this evening.
Welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. It's a pleasure to be here with you this evening. This is a request by Patrick and Karen DeFlorio for a special use permit at twelve nineteen Stoneburner Street. This is a commercial building located on the corner of Stoneburner and Thompson Streets. It was constructed in nineteen sixty-five and it was originally used as the corporate offices for the Reed's Grocery Stores. The property is Zoned B1 Local Business District. The DeFlorios request special use to have two residential units on the first floor of the building. And in a B1 Local Business District, that does require a special use permit. The DeFlorios purchased the property in two thousand and eight. The building is approximately four thousand and ninety-two square feet and it sits on a lot that is approximately eight thousand square feet. Staff has reviewed the request. We did not identify any issues. Parking will be required for this special use at the rate of one space for each residential unit plus two spaces for the office space. They do propose to use the basement of the building as offices for their business, which is diversified environmental services. So that business space requires two spaces for a total of four parking spaces. There is an existing paved area on the lot, which is more than sufficient to provide those four spaces. The city's comprehensive plan designates this area as low density residential. Typically that is single family dwelling. This request is for two family dwelling. The first floor of the building is more than two thousand square feet. So each residential unit would be more than nine hundred square feet. And that seems like a more efficient and more appropriate use of the building than having one large unit that was over two thousand square feet in size. So Planning Commission did conduct a public hearing at its October seventeenth, two thousand twenty-four meeting. No one spoke in opposition. The commission voted on a five zero vote to unanimously recommend approval of the special use permit with three conditions. The first being that a building permit will be required for a change of building code use group. Second, at least four parking spaces must be provided on the sealed surface portion of the lot. Each parking space must be at least nine feet wide and at least eighteen feet long. And finally, no more than two residential units are permitted. Do you have any questions? I'd be happy to answer them at this time.
Questions from council. All right, would, would the DeFlorios like to speak?
Hi, I'm Patrick DeFlorio, six oh three Allegheny. Thank you very much. I'm just here, available if anybody does have any questions for what we're trying to do, so.
Assessing the need for abatement in the building?
I'm actually, yeah, I'm just kidding.
Working that out now.
Some of it's already been done, so, yeah.
They loved that stuff in the sixties.
Oh, yeah.
It's, it's, yeah, yeah.
No questions?
Oh, it's great to add to our housing stock, so thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, I'm now about to open up a public hearing. It is a time that council sets aside to hear from citizens on this particular topic only. So at this point, the public hearing is open. If you would like to speak on this special use permit on Stoneburner Street, please come to the podium at this time. Mr. Kessker, is anyone on the phone?
We have no one with their hand raised.
Would anyone like to speak on this matter? I now close the public hearing. I will entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move that city council approve the request with conditions as recommended by the Planning Commission.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
Mr. Mayor, I'll second.
Council Robertson, seconds. Mr. Kessker.
Mr. Arrowood.
Aye.
Ms. Woods.
Aye.
Mr. Campbell.
Aye.
Mr. Robertson.
Aye.
Ms. Edwards.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Darby.
Aye.
Mayor Claffey.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you and good luck with your project.
Yeah, very exciting. Good. Good luck.
Next on the agenda is a public hearing and consideration by request of Ruth Finch Hall and Stephen S. Hall to rezone six twelve Randolph Street from B1 Local Business to R2 Low Density Residential District. Ms. Beauregard.
Also Tim Heartless's item.
Welcome back.
Thank you. This is a request to rezone six twelve Randolph Street from B1 Local Business to R2 Low Density Residential. This property is located on the west side of Randolph Street in the block between Spotswood Road and Buchanan Street. And it is currently a vacant lot. If this rezoning is approved, one single family dwelling would be permitted on the property. In two thousand and seventeen, city council approved rezonings for three adjacent properties. Those were six oh three North Culture Street, six oh eight and six ten Randolph Streets. And those were from B1 to R2, just as this one is. Surrounding zoning is B1 Local Business and R2 Low Density Residential. The city's comprehensive plan, future land use map, designates this area as Low Density Residential. And the proposed rezoning is consistent with that designation. Planning Commission held a public hearing at its October seventeenth, two thousand twenty-four meeting where no one spoke in opposition to the request and Planning Commission on a five zero vote unanimously recommended approval.
Any questions from council? Would the halls like to speak? Once again, I'm ready to open up a public hearing to address the issue of six twelve Randolph Street only. The public hearing is open. Would anyone like to speak? Why lunch tonight?
It is.
Mr. Kessker, anyone with their hand raised?
No, sir.
All right. The public hearing is over. I will now entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor.
Council Robertson.
I move that city council approve the request as recommended by the Planning Commission.
Motion has been made. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Councilor Campbell. Mr. Kessker, please call a roll.
Mr. Arrowood.
Aye.
Mr. Robertson.
Aye.
Ms. Edwards.
Aye.
Mr. Campbell.
Aye.
Ms. Woods.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Darby.
Aye.
Mayor Claffey.
Aye.
Motion carries.
All right, go for that one. And the next item is a public hearing and consideration of a request by John and Don Woodrum to rezone three oh nine West Beverly Street from B1 Local Business District to R4 High Density Residential District.
Heartless.
Welcome back again.
Well, thank you. The Woodrums are requesting this rezoning of three oh nine West Beverly from B1 Local Business to R4. This is a property that consists of a one thousand nine hundred and forty-two square foot dwelling on a two thousand two hundred and ten square foot lot. It's located on the north side of Beverly Street at the intersection with Beverly and North Washington. It appears to have been built as a single family home and it has been zoned B1 since at least the nineteen sixties. This area was identified in two thousand and ten by the Planning Commission for a mass rezoning from business to residential. We are hoping that we will get to this area in two thousand and twenty-five. We have completed most of the rezonings for all of the other areas that were identified in two thousand and ten and this is the last one. So I've got my fingers crossed we'll get to it next, this year, coming up in twenty-five. It's possible that the applicant could, what, what they've requested to do is enclose a rear porch. It's possible they could do that through a special use permit. But since the Planning Commission had identified this property for rezoning, we thought it would be more appropriate to pursue a rezoning at this time specifically for this lot. Staff has reviewed this request. We did not identify any issues. The city's comprehensive plan, future land use map, designates this area as neighborhood residential. That designation is characterized by large housing units on small lots and this rezoning is consistent with that designation. Planning Commission also conducted a public hearing on this matter at its October seventeenth, two thousand twenty-four meeting. No one spoke in opposition and on a five zero vote, the commission unanimously recommended approval. Do you have any questions? I'd be happy to answer them at this time.
Questions from council.
I mean, just the R4 is just to make a contiguous block with the rest of the R4. Because we look at this thing, it's just sort of a regular, single family house.
Right. Yeah, the R4 district, it is high density residential, but this lot is very small. So the only thing it could be used for is single family. And that R4 designation is simply because that's what the surrounding residential zoning is.
Okay, just caught up in contiguous.
All right, well now I'll open a public hearing again strictly for the topic of the rezoning of three oh nine West Beverly Street. Public hearing is open. Would anyone like to speak? No one on the phone?
No hands raised, no sir.
And I close the public hearing. I'll entertain a motion.
Mayor Claffey.
Yes.
I move that city council adopt the ordinance and approve the request as recommended by the Planning Commission.
All right, a motion has been made. Is there a second?
Mayor Claffey, I'll second.
Vice Mayor Darby, seconds. Mr. Kessker, please call a roll.
Mr. Robertson.
Aye.
Ms. Woods.
Aye.
Ms. Edwards.
Aye.
Mr. Arrowood.
Aye.
Mr. Campbell.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Darby.
Aye.
Mayor Claffey.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Very good. Frank and Will. Did y'all have anything you'd like to add?
Thank you and Mark, it's great to see you. And if you want to hear any stories about Mark.
No, no, no. No, 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 no.
The whole weekend, that's what we take.
Thanks, John.
Good luck. Good heavens, Mark. Got a history?
All right, that brings us to matters from the city manager.
Yes, I have a few items this evening. The mayor already mentioned voting. The registrar has a slightly higher percentage, about twenty-five percent of the city's registered voters have already cast their ballots for this election. Early voting continues through Saturday, November second. The first Saturday early voting is this weekend, the twenty-sixth, from nine to five. This is, I have information about a new feature on our website that has just been launched. It's called Recite Me and it's a new accessibility feature. And when you go on our website now, you'll see a small red and white accessibility icon in the bottom left-hand corner of all of our website pages. It looks like a person. I was just playing around with it. When you click on the icon, a toolbar appears at the top of the page with a wide range of accessibility and language support tools, allowing users to customize their experience with the site. The toolbar includes screen reading functionality, reading aids, customizable styling and language translation. Diversity, equity and inclusion are important to the city of Stanton and this is a big step forward in meeting some of those goals in the digital world. And like many unfamiliar with our city, the screen reader is still learning how to properly pronounce Stanton. Another great new initiative is Community Connect and this is through the Stanton Fire and Rescue. This is a new online portal that allows community members to create a profile and share important emergency information with the department. Profiles can include contact information, details about your home or business, who lives or works there that may need additional help and pets. This information is automatically shared with fire and rescue if they are called to your address for an emergency. And we encourage everyone to make a profile. Finally, since we're not meeting again until November fourteenth, Monday, November eleventh is Veterans Day and city offices will be closed that day. An announcement will go out soon in the form of some social media posts about the closings. But just as a quick note, like me, if you have trash pickup on Mondays, your trash will get picked up on Wednesdays. So, and the recycling center will also be closed on Veterans Day. But more details about city facility schedule changes are to follow soon. And that's all I have this evening.
All right, thank you very much.
Can I tag something on to Ms. Beauregard's comments about the fire department platform? I, I went ahead and did it. It's extremely simple. You just tell them who's, who lives there, everything. It asks who your pets are and it asks for the pictures of your pets. So I uploaded pictures of my cats, which you'll be happy to know, and my two dogs. It does not ask for pictures of the people who live there. Of course, but it's super simple and I think that would really help the police, the fire department to know how to, how to save you.
Who we think more of as a.
Our critters.
Much more important.
Much more.
All right, that brings us to matters from the public. This part of city council's agenda is entitled Matters from the Public. It is a time that council sets aside to hear from citizens on others about a wide variety of subjects. Please come to the podium to begin your, or begin your call. Identify yourself and complete your remarks within five minutes. And welcome.
Thank you very much, Jeff Overholzer, three oh nine Rainbow Drive. It was very exciting to hear about the Sepace opportunity. Any opportunity to make Stanton more business friendly and encourage people to cost effectively do business in Stanton is, is a good thing, especially if there's no risk to the city and doesn't sound like there will be. I realize there's, will be opportunity in the future for a public hearing, but I just wanted to say early on now that it seems like a great, a great thing. Also regard to the library report. Sort of adding to that, adding to that information. I'm, I'm a frequent user of the library and I just want to say it really has become a community hub, a community center. The meetings there, the, the photographic display and the home lists that Chris Lassiter led recently. It's, it's very busy with the foot traffic, people coming in and accessing wireless, talk to the librarians, circulating material. It's, it's really a terrific community resource and I really think it is a selling point for the city. And it is one of the, the ways, I think, that Stanton can say this is a great place to do business and, and increases our quality of life, the services and the resources that we have at the library. I was involved with a, a major library renovation at, at a university in my role as an IT director. And I can say that some of the trends that, that observed in terms of design of libraries is very consistent with what, what I observed as part of that renovation. People want more light, they want more open, flexible space. They want more collaborative space. They want comfortable seating, cafe-like experience. And realize with the public library, it may be more challenging to bring food and drink in, but anything that makes it inviting and open and appealing. And those, those upper floors definitely have the opportunity to, to be enhanced for, for meeting space, community meeting areas. So hopefully the, the renovations anticipated for the library will increase the appeal for those sorts of things. And so just wanted to say hooray for the library and the work that it's doing and anticipate even greater things. and anticipate even greater things with appropriate city support. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak tonight? Mr. Kessker, do we have anyone on the phone?
Oh, we do. Not sure.
Caller, can you hear me? Is there a caller on the line? No response? Anyone else wishing to speak?
Can you hear me now?
Yes, yes, caller, go ahead.
Okay, hi. Good evening, this is Moonine Jackson speaking. My parents were educators in Augusta County. I grew up there, and I'm a frequent visitor. Stanton is my home. My grandparents, we're at over 300 people during a 40-year period from 1910, when they purchased the property, and the last, the doors closed in 1950, and then the building and structure burned in 1955. I'm addressing you because I have tried for several years now to be on the formal agenda of the council so that the citizens would hear your direct vote up or down for my request to have the Queen Miller Home recognized as a historic site in Stanton. I have tried to have the grants that I have written supported by the city, and most recently, I have applied for a historic marker. Now, there have been a lot of, there's been a lot of correspondence between myself and your city manager and some of the others and a couple of the council people. But this is the gravement of the situation as far as I'm concerned. My grandparents, undeniably, made a major contribution to the community, not just Augusta County, but outside. And the fire, which claimed the life of my cousins and displaced my family and me and the Queen Miller people, is well-known. And it seems to me that the failure of the fire department, which I've submitted to the fire department a historic documentation of that whole event because they didn't take care of the hydrant and all of those things that are very necessary to make sure that the fire apparatus works. Well, I'm not trying to litigate that except to say that I didn't think it robbery to ask them to help to donate for the marker that will identify the property and what went on there. And I find that the city manager is, and I believe the city council is over-influenced by the West End Business Association, which, incidentally, doesn't have one African-American business and doesn't have one African-American member, which I verified through their former president and his associated information on their website. Then there's a woman, Mari Thomas, who seems to be desirous of speaking for the African-American experience, and she is an African-American, and she can't speak for my experience. And I resent the fact that she has taken up so much time around the city discussing the fact that she has a marker that she thinks should be placed there. And the unfortunate part is that the African-Americans, who are part of that organization, have not stood up for the rights of the Queen Miller family and for my family and for the African-American experience. And then there's one other, the Stanton, I think it's called LLC, but their owner is Keith Heber, who has been trying to buy my property and wants to invest there and has had, from my understanding, conversation with the city around all of the issues that I'm raising. And all of these people seem to have influenced the slow movement of my efforts to have this property recognized. And I'm just hoping that the new people who come on the council would be far more diligent and making sure that the constituent voices are heard and respected and that there's dialogue that is meaningful, not CYA correspondence. You know, you understand what I mean, covering, you're behind, basically. I don't like it. It is my hometown. I don't, I don't take a backseat to anybody in claiming my rights to have my voice heard and to be respected. And, you know, basically, it's a disappointment to spend three and four years on this very same project, jumping hoops and not having any results. So I, it's very disappointing that you, that we don't have the kind of exchange and that this comes during a public hearing, and I can't hear your voices. That means, that is to say, I don't know your opinions, and so therefore, everything is filtered through somebody else. And that's not the way to run a business. So I thank you for the opportunity to say what I need to say.
Thank you, Ms. Jackson.
Mm-hmm, good night.
Would anyone else like to speak? Anyone else have their hand raised?
No, sir.
All right, meeting adjourned. Good evening, everybody.